Good evening. Today is Thursday, October the thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and the time is now six thirty P. M. I will now call the regular meeting of ISD one ninety-one, Board of Education, to order. Welcome to those here in the audience today, as well as those watching online. Director Miller, will you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Move.
Moved by Director Connor.
Second.
Second by Director Miller. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously. Now we'll move on to the information portion of our meeting, and we'll be given, being presented with information regarding District two eighty-eight's association membership opportunity. We have Amy Pietruski, Director of Student Support Services.
All right, thank you. Good evening Chair Chester, Directors, and Dr. Battle. I'm here to provide you some information regarding an opportunity that we have to become an associate member with District two eighty-eight. Currently, there are three, three membership, or really two membership, or that they have in the district. Right now, we are considered a non-member in the district. And so with that, they have, we can make referrals to the district, and they can take our referrals. If they have openings, they can choose to do that. If they choose not to, then that's their discretion. They have availability in some of the programs that would be appropriate for the students. The other membership that we have that I, we are mostly interested in is the associate membership. And with the associate membership comes the same opportunities as a full membership, except we don't have a vote at the board. So we don't have a board member on there, so there's not a board. We would get the same opportunities as an associate member of having no waitlists. Two eighty-eight does not have a waitlist for their member districts, and we would have full opportunities to be able to use that. Then they have the full opportunity, or membership, that has the same as the associate membership, but they have a vote at the board. So those are basically the three memberships. We currently have four students as a non-member in the district that are receiving services at two eighty-eight. So we pay for the costs of those students that are there, but as a non-member, we also pay an additional twenty percent above that. So there is a little bit more of a cost for not having an associate member or a full membership with the district. So the process would be, if we can move forward, the process would be a email to Director Kerns, and he would take that information to the superintendent, so the members of the superintendents of the two eighty-eight. They would have a discussion there, they would vote. If it passes, then the next would go to the Board of Education, and they would have a discussion, and they would vote to allow us to come in as associate membership. If it passes those two, we would be notified that they're, would accept us as an associate member, and then from there, we would join a joint powers agreement, and the associate membership would start July first of two thousand twenty-three. Are there questions?
Yeah, yeah, for questions. Director Connor?
Yes.
Could you just repeat the three different?
Yep, the three memberships, yep. So, non-member, which that's what we are.
Right.
An associate membership, and then the full membership.
And what are the prices of the associate and the full?
The, okay, so the associate membership and the full membership, we would just pay for the cost of the students to be part of that program. So whatever those costs would be, they, you know, if we have, if it's a program, they have six students, the cost of the program divided by six, and then each member in the district, or each district that has a student in that program would pay like one-sixth of it. Then as a non-member, we are paying an additional twenty percent fee on top of that. So if it's ten thousand dollars, we pay an additional twenty percent above that.
I see.
Okay.
Okay. That's where I was missing the distinction.
Yeah.
Other questions? Director Miller?
I'd like to explore that a little bit further. I'm, I'm, I'm having, I'm trying to understand why we wouldn't have done this a long time ago. What is, there must be some reason why we have not been an associate member to date.
I guess I didn't know that this was a possibility with two eighty-eight. I hadn't heard of this. In the past, what we have done is we have just made referrals to them, and then the discussion was there to bring us in. I wasn't aware until just recently that they had the associate membership as a possibility.
It's, it's new. It's newer. It started like a year or so ago.
Yeah, it hasn't, Bloomington was one of them.
Why wouldn't we just choose a full membership?
Well, we could, I guess.
Is there a cost additional to that?
I think the conflict would be with nine seventeen.
Yeah, we already with our nine seventeen, we've got several students that are in nine seventeen already, and so to become a non-member there would.
Or we would have to become a non-member in nine seventeen to be, we can't be members in two different alternative districts. Is that what you're saying?
Not sure.
I'm, I'm not sure either. I.
I mean, what, what is the value between being an associate member and a member? I understand you get to vote as a member.
That would be the only difference. If we were a full member, then we would have a vote at the board.
There's not an additional twenty percent or anything like that?
No, associate membership and full membership are exact same, except the full membership has a vote at the board.
So if we were able to do that, I don't understand why we wouldn't take that advantage of that if, unless there's, they, they would, you know, cry some call, conflict of interest issue. But I don't know why we wouldn't inquire about being a. My understanding was, what kind of drove this conversation was nine-one-seven not being able to fulfill their contractual obligations to us, and that we do have families that are waitlisted.
Yep, yes.
And so, upon hearing that two eighty-eight is not, does not waitlist, I believe is the way I've heard it, I, I'm struggling to understand how that's possible, how they can make that a promise. And I mean, if I'm not understanding, then anybody can explain it to me, but if, my understanding that the reason other, nine-one-seven has to waitlist this is that there's a, there's a teacher shortage or a staffing shortage, which is totally understandable. Why two eighty-eight wouldn't be in the same circumstances is a little interesting to me. So then logically, the only way they could possibly make it work, that they guarantee it, is to provide a service that isn't equitable to what nine-one-seven is, or anybody else for that matter is promising to offer. I mean, that's just the conclusion I'm coming to. Does anybody have an answer to that, or do we know how they guarantee? I mean, they, where maybe normally you have one to three ratio, now they're going four or five to one ratio, so that they can guarantee no waitlist? That may not be as attractive as the opportunity of no waitlist, is what I'm saying.
Well, I guess I'm not exactly sure how they, but I know, I do know that they are able to find teachers and paraprofessionals, and so I, I'm not sure if there's a, what the difference in maybe the pay or anything like that. I'm not exactly sure what that would be. But I do know that the students that we have at two eighty-eight are getting a really good equitable service, and so I don't have any concerns that our students would not receive the services that they read. And, and that's our job to make sure that they are getting the services. We are invited to those IEP meetings, and there's discussion. We problem solve if there's any issues, just like we do with any student in any other intermediate school district.
So I would just venture that, given that they have sort of these tiered membership levels, okay, so first of all, in our current, I forget what you call the entry level, or whatever we're at.
Non-member.
Non-member, we can be waitlisted, is that correct?
Yes, they can choose not to accept our referral. They, yep.
So if they came under, if we were just assuming that they're doing a better job of hiring, and they don't have those capacity restrictions right now, we can't guarantee that never is going to happen for them, depending on what happens in the, the labor market. So if they were to come under those restraints, natural assumption would be that the associate membership is where they would first change the rules about waitlisting, right, before they would change it for their members. I, I'm not asking you, that's a rhetorical question.
Yeah, I understand.
To me, another argument why we should go for full membership, I guess, if that's a possibility. So I would, as long as there's no club membership fee, so to speak, or whatever, and I'm hearing that's not the case, so.
I think I would be interested in understanding, you know, because we pay for services to be a member of nine seventeen, what that would equate to, to be part of two eighty-eight at the same time. What I do know, and I, from my experience with two eighty-eight, is that there's been a lot of people, a lot of districts approaching them to want to become full members, but they're kind of trying to, their original membership is like, do we, don't we? And then being, and so they've created this associate tier for those that are probably closer in physical proximity to their district boundaries, and I believe, maybe it's only Bloomington or maybe one more that are associate members. So it's not like there's a large pool of associate membership, it's like one or two districts.
So when we, regardless of the status, when we are sending kiddos to two eighty-eight versus nine-one-seven, I assume they're physically going somewhere else, right, a different building, a different district, a different space, right?
Um, yeah, they're, they're attending the buildings within the intermediate school. We got ones in Jordan, Minnesota, and the rest, I believe, are in Shakopee.
And we, we are responsible for transportation costs associated with that? So the fact that we are, we need to send them beyond nine-one-seven, I, I would feel like there's, I'm concluding that there's an additional burden of transportation costs to our district because that is occurring, which kind of brings me back to the point of, I, I like, I'm appreciative that we found a solution to the problem, but the problem still exists, and I'm concerned of why it exists with nine-one-seven, and their, their inability to meet contractual obligation with us. And I, and I, you know, if this solution works, and, and we can, with fair confidence predict that it will cover the future potentialities, I'm okay with that. But I, I would like to make sure that we're solving for the problem, not band-aiding, you know, I, I do one-hundred percent feel that the kids that are not being served right now, today, tomorrow, need to be taken care of. I, I agree with that. I just want to make sure we're solving for the longer-term situation. Towards that end, I, I just throw it on the table, the idea that we re-explore the possibility of ending any of these relationships and bringing these services back to one ninety-one. And I don't know what the realities of that, could be someone could tell me that's not even a remote possibility, I don't know. But we have one building at least that's sitting currently to the most per vacated or unused in Sioux Trail. So that's always a possibility that we could bring these kids back into our district. So anyway, I throw that out for consideration. That's good enough for me then.
Director Alt?
Yeah, I, since we're talking about opportunities, and I know we all want to make sure we are serving our students, you know, understanding, and this might, you know, maybe it's a two-step process over time, right? I would like to understand, you know, the possibility of having membership in both. Why, why, you know, is there, is there a conflict? But also, the staffing question, you know, it would, might, I remember that, you know, we, there was a period of time when we were serving many more special needs students in the district, and part of the decision to move them to, to, to contract increasingly with nine-one-seven was cost savings. So I guess the question is, you know, I'd certainly be interested in exploring the possibility of using one of our empty buildings, because, you know, we'd like to use our schools. Not necessarily instead of what you're suggesting, right? Because we need to take care of now.
Correct.
My guess is we probably can't afford it at this point, but, you know, it, it certainly would be interesting to, to understand better if, if, you know, how would we be able to do that?
Provide a unique level four setting.
Exactly, yes, level four, exactly, yep.
Other?
I just want to be very clear. I've offered some challenges, but I want to, do want to thank you for the time you spend on this and the effort you put into this. And, and I know you're focused on the, the immediate needs of the immediate families. We're just looking a little bit further down the horizon, so. But I, I do appreciate what you've done here and what you brought to the table. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
I forgot. So in terms of the students themselves, and the travel time and the distance, what's the difference between nine seventeen and two eighty-eight?
It would depend upon the location that the student is getting their services in. And so they, we do have students that travel quite a ways.
To nine seventeen?
To nine seventeen. You know, we've got Cedar in our district, and, and those are our closest ones. And then there's some in Apple Valley. We've got some, Concord is in Rosemount, I think, or.
South, Inver Grove Heights.
Inver Grove Heights. And so there's, there is some travel. I think that the, the majority of the students that we have on our waitlist currently would most likely end up in Shakopee there. But then we do have a student that is currently in Jordan, so we do have a bus already going, that if that's the case, and it's, I know from personal experience, it's twenty-eight minutes to the district office. Yes, thank you.
Are these all level four students, or are they other special needs?
All the students that we have at nine seventeen, other than if they are in a day treatment or something that, you know, nine seventeen offers that as well. But the students that we refer through, through Special Education Services, we refer them to a setting four.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Other questions? No, thank, great, thank you. And then maybe from this, if we, maybe can get a little more detail of the different, you know, what the, what the various opportunities are, or what if, if there is a conflict that exists to have dual membership, kind of what that might entail for us to be able to digest a little more.
Okay. Sounds good.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Great, next we, I welcome Seham Ibrahim here, taking over for Ava, our student representative. And so we'll have our student representative report. Welcome, Seham.
Hi. Is this working? I'm sorry.
Oh, is there, there might be a button. Is it lit?
Hello?
There you go.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Seham, and I'm here on the behalf of Ava Drobnik. So some big events have happened at this year's homecoming week, which flew by at the end of September. There were always full of spirit, there were, as, there were always full of spirit themed days in a fun butterfly garden themed dance that Saturday. All of this prompts a huge thank you to the student council, who put in a lot of time getting the school ready during the week as a whole and for the dance. Student council and royalty also toured the middle schools on Friday, which really gets the eighth graders excited to come to BHS. Differently from last year, we got to experience homecoming in the newer gyms this year, which was a fun, fresh experience, considering that it was built with these dances in mind. So it's nice that we could put that to use. Not only has student council been active, but there's a new anti-drug club, which has high hopes to foster a sober environment. The leader was, Perp was previously at Chan-Hassan in Chaska, running a similar activity. She was able to gain a lot of support there and is, and is expecting the same here from us. Even though they're new, the sidewalks were chalked up for homecoming, spreading encouragement to enjoy the night sober. The group will continue the similar stay-sober mentality during events like New Year's Eve, other school dances, or other events where drinking wouldn't be out of the question. I hope they can get a strong following, similar to Burnsville Strong. Speaking of Burnsville Strong, the two branches of Burnsville Strong have really started to bloom as the school year progresses. Full of eager juniors and seniors, the community outreach and positive outreach groups have started to have monthly meetings. Positive outreach is more high school oriented, and community outreach focuses on Burnsville as a whole. For now, the group has been making posters with basic encouragement for students and hanging them, hanging them up around the school. The Link Crew has been up to some of, has been up more as well, starting to meet, meet once a week during the second hour, to, to plan for more outreach with our Linkies during their advisories. Last year, Link Crew was more of a one-time event, but it's nice to see students having more year-long connections with the freshmen. It mostly consists of activities that forge longer relationships, like partners trying to throw a paper airplane with their non-dominant hands as a pair than trying to throw the, than trying to throw it, truly getting at realizing obstacles and learning how to overcome them. There's also the National Honor Society, who recent, who recently had their induction ceremony for new junior and senior members. That was just this past Monday. It went really well, and it's always nice to see people recognized for doing a good job. With so many stellar groups, the Green Day Apple Service was a breeze, both figuratively and weather-wise. There was an amazing group of over fifty students who spent two hours beautifying the Burnsville High School area. It was a fun fall day, and this isn't on my thing, but this is kind of a self-insert, we had our first BSU meeting, Black Student Union meeting today, with over a hundred fifty members attending. Lastly, it's been busy for seniors as college admissions is becoming a bigger part of everyone's plate. Thankfully though, the Colleging Career Center has been setting up lots of college visits, including the upcoming HBCU College Fair available for curious students. Mr. Sexton is keeping the boat afloat, and people really appreciate the resources Burnsville, Burnsville offers for after-high school readiness. It's been a busy few weeks, but Burnsville High School has been doing an amazing job keeping it together for our first normal year since COVID. I can feel that we will accomplish so much more this year. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much for your report. I know it's a highlight of our board meeting, so. Wonderful. And now we'll move on to our superintendent report.
Also a highlight of the meeting.
I can follow.
Yes. Thank you Chair Chester and members of the board. I want to take this opportunity to talk a little bit about school safety. It's something that's on the minds of students, staff, and parents. It's something we think about and work on, on a regular basis. This fall, families and staff have hopefully seen that we've adopted a new emergency response protocol called the Standard Response Protocol. It will help ensure that schools respond to emergency situations consistently and effectively. There is some new terminology involved, so I encourage families to watch for additional information or learn more on our website. So often when we talk about school safety, we talk about the physical environment, the locked doors, and buzzer, entry systems, or about our response when emergencies happen, like lockdowns and evacuations. Those things are important, but making our schools safe places for every student starts by ensuring every student knows they are welcome and valued for who they are. Every student should be able to bring their whole self to school without fear of being bullied, harassed, or discriminated against, and that they can turn to peers and staff members when they need support. If we have that, we are living our core value of being a caring community. You may know that October is National Bullying Prevention Month. One of the most important ways we can make our schools safe is to act to prevent bullying or to respond when it does happen. There are some wonderful resources available online at stopbullying.gov, and I know we'll be sharing some resources for students and families throughout the month on our social media channels. But the simplest and the most important advice is encouraging people to speak up when they see bullying happen, to be upstanders rather than bystanders. By speaking up and interrupting bullying behavior, even just by changing the subject or walking with the person being bullied, you can let them know they are not alone, that they matter. Even one person's support can make a big difference to someone who is being bullied. I am proud of all of the work we do to be a caring community and to create truly safe schools, so each and every student can know they matter and can blaze their own path. I am committed to ensuring we keep improving, and I want to say thank you to every staff member, student, parent, and community member who partners with us to do the same. So thank you. That concludes my report tonight.
Thank you. Director. Next, we'll have any board member reports realizing that's the next board meeting, we do the committee and assignment reports. So if there's any other reports tonight from board members, Director Miller?
Actually, more of a coattail on students' report. My son is a freshman this year, and as such, we encountered homecoming for the first time. And he had the experience of also, a week before Burnsville's hometown, homecoming, attending a neighboring school's homecoming, and with his friends. So come Burnsville night, I, I was dad taxi picking them up, and they announced that it was by far a way better dance at Burnsville than it was.
That's awesome. Director Connor?
Just a highlight on the Joint City Council that.
Yep.
Yeah, that in attendance, oh, that we attended, the school, some of our school board members attended with the city council, and that was me, myself, and Superintendent Battle, Vice Chair Hume, and Director Alt. And we had dinner at the fire station, it was number one, right? Not two, fire station one, yes.
The one by Caribou.
Yes, which is the new state-of-the-art fire station, and they got, we had a very nice tour of that. And they're still short of staff, so for anyone who's listening, they offer incentives and pay. And they are also kind of dual, dual-trained, because the first responders, I guess, handle eighty percent of the calls as well as just the fire, the firemen, and so a lot of them are paramedics and firemen. So that's, that's my report.
If I may just piggyback onto, if you have not had a chance to visit the new fire station and get a tour, I highly recommend it. It's an incredible building, and I feel like our tax dollars are being put to good use in that facility.
They cooked you dinner, is that correct?
They did. It was really good.
I was out of town. I was, I was really disappointed I was missing.
You missed a delicious barbecue dinner.
Oh, I was hoping it was chili, but all right.
That was my prediction, but it was not chili. It was really good, though.
A good brisket.
State-of-the-art in the county. It's really good.
Sounds good.
Awesome, thank you. Now, that concludes our information portion of the meeting. We'll move on to the business portion. We're starting with our consent agenda. Although board action is required, it's generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved to a separate consideration. Do any board members wish to remove any of the items to the consent, from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Wer.
Second.
Second by Director Alt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously. Now we'll go to the new business, and first on, we're being asked to approve Burnsville's ICE Center rental agreement, and we have Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent.
Good evening, board. So there's an, this is an annual ICE rental agreement with the, that we have with the city of Burnsville, and it provides practice, game, and playoff time for both our, our boys and girls hockey. The percentage change was included this year as the city of Burnsville does not have enough staff to provide the ticket taker scanner position, so that has been added into the contract as well. It's in your board notes. They will continue to provide entrance security for Rink Two games, so some, some slight variations for some of the language and the fees. The final recommendation is that the Board of Education approves the Burnsville ICE Center rental agreement for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year, in the estimated amount of forty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars, for a total of one hundred and seventy-eight point two-five hours of ICE time. for a total of one hundred and seventy-eight point two-five hours of ICE time.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume?
Second.
Second by Director Miller. Any discussion? Director Miller?
Well, actually, to start with, there, there is actually a couple of typos in this, I noticed. If, for referencing the, the recommendation, it refers to the, the changes that were added, taken from Exhibit A. On the contract, it's actually labeled Exhibit B. Now, I think you could probably just change the recommendation in our file. That won't be, it's a big deal. But in Exhibit B, it does reference the change for the, I believe they gave us a five percent on the gate fee. It reads, the parties agree that for the purpose of the games, fifty percent, and then parentheses, forty-five percent of the ticket proceeds will be paid to the city, and fifty-five percent, parentheses, fifty-five percent of the ticket proceeds will be retained by the user. So if you follow me, the, I think the language just needs to be updated there to be clear, since it is a contract. And then in general, I'll again voice my frustration and disappointment that we're still paying the street rate of two-hundred-and-forty dollars, now two-hundred-and-forty per hour, and collecting, I guess, a slight fifty-five percent of the gate now instead of fifty percent of the gate. But we're incurring additional costs for that. And we, we get nothing of the concession stand. With the co-op in place, I did notice when looking through the schedule that it looks like basically the boys are not going to use the ICE at Burnsville at all this year for the most part. There are, I think, two days of games at Burnsville, and no practices scheduled. The primary usage of this ICE time is all for this, for the Girls Phoenix grouping, which has nothing to do with Apple Valley. But for the boys, you know, the Apple, we have the Apple Valley ICE over there. I'm, I don't know this for a fact, but since it's part of their high school, I'm assuming they don't pay anything for that and probably get a hundred percent of the concessions, so. So I guess that's a positive, since we don't, saving us money in that essence. So I can't remember what past contracts we're at exactly, but with the, what was the estimate, about forty thousand on this? I'm guessing that's about half of what we paid in the past years for, for ICE bills, so.
That's correct.
Sixty.
Yeah.
Thousand left.
Seven thousand.
Okay. All right, that's all I had to say about it. Let me just, I, I don't know, we can probably ratify this and make, with the understanding that slight language tweak we made, right? Since it's a clarification thing, we don't have to come bring it back again, I don't think.
Do we retract, do we, do you make an amendment to the motion and then, how do we, do we work it backwards?
It depends too whether, whether the city's already signed this or not, because they might need to re-sign.
Sure.
Sorry to cause you, some paperwork runaround, but a contract should be corrected.
I get it right.
It is just the exhibit, though, not the primary contract, so.
Oh, well, could you repeat?
Yep, so if you're looking at what's titled as Exhibit B, under subsection three, Ticket Proceeds, it reads the word fifty percent and parentheses forty-five percent. That should have been changed to forty-five percent to match the forty-five percent in the parentheses.
Yep.
It should be consistent, yes.
Yes. So are we asking to amend the contract? Would that change the motion, because we'd be approving the contract as written?
The city has not yet signed this, correct?
We don't, I don't know. Is that correct? We're not seeing.
But has, the city hasn't yet signed it? Okay, that's, that's, yeah, that's all. So, yeah, then we would make an amendment.
Of the motion?
Of, of the motion.
So the first thing we need to do is, okay, so I move to offer an adjust, a slight adjustment to the aforementioned language in the contract so that we can approve the contract tonight. I, that's, I need a second for that.
Oh, okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Alt.
So you can vote on that, then.
So is there any discussion on that?
On the correction.
On the correction.
Correction is Exhibit B point three under Ticket Proceeds.
Correct.
Where it reads fifty, but it should say fifty-five. Forty-five.
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 It should match in text what it says in parentheses.
Parentheses, yes. Okay, so is there any discussion on that? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes unanimously. As amended.
Well, no, we passed the amendment. Now you would for forward the, a vote for the, the original motion as amended.
All right, so do I have, do I have to redo the motion?
No, we're good. It's on the table.
Okay, so, all right, so now, any other discussion?
That's correct.
Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of the amended?
Motion as amended.
Motion as amended. Thank you. Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Nay. I did say nay. No, motion carries unanimously. Okay, good. This is so confusing sometimes.
And for any reason the city decides that's not, then, then you'd have to bring the whole thing back again. But it can be signed with those corrections, is basically.
Lodge could tell you they'll accept that.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they will, yes.
Bring it back if not.
Okay.
And the, and the timing list of this policy first read is nice, being Bullying Prevention Month. So we have, are being asked to approve on a first-reading basis changes to Policy 514, Bullying Prohibition Policy. And we have Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair. So we are looking to approve on a first-reading basis those changes to Policy 514, our Bullying Prohibition Policy. There's been some slight minor edits to text, making sure that we're updating and aligned to the MSBA, cross-reference Title 522 policy. One addition is in Section Nine, calling for an annual policy review as practicable. So I'm asking that the board considers approving on this first-reading basis changes to Policy 514, Bullying Prohibition.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Connor?
Second.
Second by Director Werb. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we're being asked to approve on a first-reading basis changes to Policy 516, Student Medication. We have Amy Pietrowski, Director of Student Support Services.
Good evening again. I would like to have you guys approve the first-reading basis, Changes to Policy 516, Student Medication. The Policy Review Committee met on September twenty-seventh and reviewed the information. There were some fixes to the legal references, as well as some minor changes that were made regarding some of the verbiage. Also, the Policy Review Committee requested that we moved from parent to parent and guardian, and those changes were made throughout the policy as well. So with that, I'm asking to approve the first-reading basis, Changes to Policy 516, Student Medication.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume, second by Director Miller. Any discussion?
I just have, just curiosity, so this appears to be all language change, right? But I am curious, at the very beginning, where we talk about, what is it here? This is in Section Roman numeral three, subsection E, perception and medicine, medications are not to be carried with, but we kept with the school district personnel versus health office. What, curious what the change, motivation change on that was.
Well, it aligns with the MSBA for that piece right there, and so that was in there. And then the health office, I, I'm not exactly sure why they made that change. I just, I just aligned it with that piece there.
Okay, I, you know, might just be with staffing needs and stuff, because they are, might not always have a health office person available, I suppose.
Yeah, but we go, we're on field trips and we're on, you know, when we go away on field trips and things like that,
some students have to take their medication with them, and so that would be removed from the health office. But it would still be in the property of our personnel, even on those cases, so.
That's fine, then. That's all. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And this concludes our regular scheduled board meeting. Next, we will be moving on to adjourn to a workshop about the Memorandum of Understanding for Recruiting and Retaining Staff of Color. We will take a five-minute break.
Thank you. Yeah.
With our workshop, we'll hand it over to Dr. Battle.
Well, thank you Chair Chester and members of the board. Tonight Wendy, Drew D. and I will present the work of the MOU, of the Committee for the MOU, the Memorandum of Understanding for Recruiting and Retaining Staff of Color. This is what happens when you've never presented from here before. Oh, Alan is moving it for us.
Oh.
He has control. So I'm gonna turn it over to Wendy for the first few slides.
All right. Good evening Chair Chester and members of the board. It's a privilege to be here tonight and see all of you in person. So here is our agenda tonight. We are going to review the Memo of Understanding that was a part of our negotiations round that ended June 21st, 2021. We'll also be talking about the Guiding Change document that helped lead our work. We're also going to be presenting 191 data about the demographics of our staff and our students in the district. Then we'll also be bringing forward evidence-based practices for recruiting and retaining staff of color. Then we'll also talk about the current strategies that we have in 191 for recruiting and retaining staff of color. And then we'll also bring forward the MOU committee recommendations that the committee came forward with. So here is the Memo of Understanding that we had in the contract. So you can see that it outlined that both parties, both the BEA and the district, were committed to exploring options to increase having teachers and staff of color in ISD 191. At this point, can I talk about who our members were that served? Yeah, so just to give you an understanding who served on the committee, there were five union members that represented the union and it was Erin Huber. She is a teacher at Harry Bishop. Jason Cressman is at Sky Oaks. Amethyst Steg Bower is at William Burn. Moni Barnes, sorry, is at Nicollet Middle School. She also was selected because she's a newly hired staff in the district. She's been in the district three years last year. This is, I believe, the start of her fourth year. And then Sean Simmons is at Burnsville High School and also Eagle Ridge Middle School. So in asking these people to serve on the committee, we made sure to select staff of color also. And then we had our student on the committee was Seham Ibrahim, who's here tonight, so that worked out great. We had a rep from the Amplify affinity group and that was Kudjo Ameg Blame. And we also had from CISA, we had Amina Ovtidal. And Dr. Angie Poole was our principal rep. And then, of course, Superintendent Dr. Battle and myself served on the committee.
So we're gonna dive in a little bit in the Guiding Change. And so we'll open that link to the Guiding Change document. But really, there were two driving questions that really influenced our work. So what strategies does 191 employ to attract, hire and retain Indigenous and staff of color? And how might we strengthen our efforts and add to our strategies to have staff reflect the demographics of the students and the families we serve? Current reality, and in some of the following slides, you'll see some of the current reality with the data. So our percentages of students, far of students of color and Indigenous students exceeds the number of employees that are Indigenous or students of color. But you will also see in the current reality, some slides will show you actually, Erin, could you go back to the link in the Guiding Change? Thank you. You'll also see some of our current efforts that do align to what we found in best practices. We have received a Grow Your Own grant. We did identify unacceptable means, which is in the second column, that we did not want to create options that are unsustainable or limit the board's future actions to strengthen strategies and increase the number of staff of color. So our desired results, I believe as a committee, we met some of these results. But of course, the real proof will come in the action steps that we employ based on the committee's recommendations. We did determine some strategies. We want to have evidence that we're retaining staff of color. We want to identify barriers and work on reducing those barriers or eliminating those barriers and really look at the recruitment and retention and having human resource staff and principals receive, the hiring managers, to receive feedback that could inform their The next part of the Guiding Change, we do have some groups where we want some input. As Wendy mentioned, we had representatives from various constituent groups in our district, but we also feel that we need to broaden. And so, for example, we do have other directors and the Burnsville Education Association Executive Leadership Team to get their input. And I also have a superintendent's race advisory and they've also reviewed some of the strategies and affirmed many of the committee recommendations and had a couple of other additional thoughts. So the next slides, we'll go into some of that current reality and the data. So you'll see three charts here. The first chart, you'll see the total number of employees by fiscal year, starting in 19 through this current year, fiscal year 23. If you look at the grand total at the bottom of that first chart on the left, we have a total of 1,175 employees. If you move to the second chart, we then identify the employees who self-identified as BIPOC, Black Indigenous or People of Color. Same timeframe, fiscal year 19 through fiscal year 23. So of the 1,175, we have 179 staff members who identify as BIPOC. And the last chart on the right, you will see percentages. So for the grand total, we have 15% of our employees identify as BIPOC. The next slide. Here we have our student ethnicity data that had been recorded for fall 2021. You will also see from years 2018 through 2022. So if we look at enrollment by ethnicity, the five-year trend on the left side, you'll see the percentages. They total 68.7%. The slide on, excuse me, the chart on the right also gives you the numbers for those The next slide has our new hires. So we have implemented some activities to recruit and retain staff of color. And so we felt it was important to look at the new hires for this year. And so if you see the grand total for employees that we've hired new, June 1st, they're 90. The second chart of those 90, 23 have identified as BIPOC. And then the last chart on the right, you see the percentage, so 26%. The next, so I don't know if you want me to stop or you want to hear the whole presentation. Sometimes data prompts questions.
I think it would be healthy to have a conversation at this point about the data before we get into that.
Okay.
I can leave with that if you'd like.
Sure.
I'd like to understand a little bit of the, so first of all, this idea of BIPOC, self-identification as BIPOC. Do we know what percentage of the staff choose not to self-identify in any manner? Have a null value?
That's a good question. I can ask.
I think we're making an assumption that if they self-identify as BIPOC, then that is a count of our BIPOC community and our, both, to me more importantly, in the hiring side of things. But I'm, because we compare that to the student identification and that is obviously much more than a binary white or BIPOC. There's breakout and everything. And if my memory serves me right, that's probably a little bit more concise. It's almost like you can't answer that question as a student.
So if you can go back to that slide with the fiscal year 23 employee count by unit and percent, there's at least one with certainty, you know, that there isn't, that would be me. So superintendent is 100%.
Yeah, I saw that. I was trying to remember, were you?
But yeah, but if you look at ADE, 17%, how many did not declare an ethnicity? I think, is that your question?
Or like overall of staff?
Yeah.
If staff are required, you know, if it asks of staff to identify their ethnicity or race?
Yeah.
How many choose, like, to not disclose?
Right.
Like, is there, like?
Where are we getting this information from? Is it like a survey? Is it something that?
Well, it's your HR when you're hired. There's a box.
When you're hired.
There are boxes.
And that goes into their folder. Okay. And then, yeah, do we require that? Do they, can they just skip past that question?
You can't require it, but you can, but people can choose to not disclose.
Sure.
Right.
But I'm not, I'm not sure if that's a large percent or not.
I don't know either, but we're making a pretty heavy conclusion on this dataset. So I'm just wanting to potentially illuminate a bias in the dataset, that's all. And then, I guess, if, would it be incorrect for me to, the conclusion that I am drawing from this, the 15% at the end of, or in 2023, if we assume that the data, you know, is usable, as we discussed, then that would be, you know, 15% of our staff, our entire employee population is of color. That's the conclusion we're being asked to draw here, right? Sum it up. And obviously, you know, without getting into the numbers, our student body is much more diverse than that. And then the, we have a, we have a hiring percentage of 26% of color. I'm a little surprised, to be honest, because I've, we've had anecdotally for years now, sort of a storyline that we're doing pretty well on hiring of color. And so I am just a little surprised by that, I guess, to hear that number is lower. I, I know this memorandum in general is titled "For Recruiting and Retaining." I've always felt a little bit like it's more on the retaining side than it is the recruiting side, because we, I thought we were doing pretty well on recruiting staff of color. So if I'm not drawing the right conclusion, let me know that. But that's the conclusion I'm taking away from these, the numbers that have been presented so far.
If memory serves me right, I believe like there was a survey that we had asked staff to do. I believe the number, and correct me if I'm wrong, was around, was 20-something percent, I don't remember like the exact number, of people that chose not to disclose like their ethnicity and race. But yeah, also, I lost my train of thought for a second. I think that although our numbers aren't correct, are not right, and that we're focusing more on the retaining and more, or less on the recruiting side, I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing to focus on the retaining. There's only so many people of color that we can hire right now, considering the lack of BIPOC in the education, in the education community. So I think retaining is something that's seriously important, considering that we have had numbers drop a significant amount. So, and I think we are, we are taking the right steps. And I think that, looking at the next fiscal year, seeing how many staff we've recruited in the next couple of years, I think that's something that could be a great benefit to us.
Well, and I think also, there's, there's the, there's the retention issue surrounding declining enrollment and the fact that we know that most of the diversity is being hired more recently. You know, they're, they're the junior staff and those would naturally be the ones that would be released when the board has to make budget cuts as a result of declining enrollment. So agreed completely, recruit and retain with a focus on retain is important. And there are other strings attached to the retention part, too.
Yeah, I, again, to me, this overall challenge has principally been on the retaining side of things, given the, the annual constraints we operate under as we, you know, adjust our staff and, and the ability, what we can do there. And, you know, just at some point, this is entire staff. So we have a clerical body, we have food service, we have unaffiliated and such in this, but teachers, of course, are the largest component of this. And I know, I'm also acutely aware that we operate in a, like everywhere in every other industry, we operate in a labor-intensive situation. You literally might have one valid candidate come forward for a role at that point, regardless of what ethnicity they are. They, they might be the only candidate for the role because they're the only one that can make it to the application. But, yeah, I just, I'm a little surprised. I thought we were aggressively hiring of color. Now whether we can keep them on after the first, second year is, comes the challenge. Anyway, that's observation.
But I think it's also just that it's a statewide.
It's a what?
Statewide issue.
Oh.
Because like where I work, we, we work to train upcoming teachers of color to become teachers in the district. And some of my arguments with grant writing is that Minnesota only has 7% of teachers of color compared to 38% of the student body, and that's in the state. And for the St. Paul Public Schools, it's 21% are teachers of color versus the 79% of students of color. So this is something that I'm glad that our district is embracing and wanting to address because it is, I mean, it's probably a national concern, but it's definitely a statewide concern.
So some additional data that I think we are recruiting, if you look at the number of teacher candidates in the state of Minnesota. So the Professional Educator Licensing and Standards Board, they have to give a state report every year. And so the last report I had was 2021. In teacher preparation programs in Minnesota State Colleges and Universities and the University of Minnesota, including Twin Cities, Morris and Crookston, 82% of the candidates in those teacher programs were 82% white, 4% African-American or Black, 3% multiracial, 3% Hispanic, 3% Asian or Pacific Islander, 1% American Indian or Alaskan Native, and 4% undeclared Other. So I'll follow up with your question about our numbers. So the numbers, 8,788 white students that are in the education program and 1,340 candidates of color or American Indian. And so for us, if you look at the teacher, to get 9%, that might be good, considering the candidates. What's also interesting, two of our major partners are in the top four of having the most people of color in their programs. And so that would be Metro State and also Minnesota State Mankato. And then the other two are Concordia and St. Paul and Augsburg in Minneapolis. So we have strong partnerships with the two. And so actually Wendy and I talked about today, how do we get more student teachers or practical students from those four? So we'll be following up on that.
Can I just add one thing? When you mentioned, like, I'm surprised the numbers are going down if we're still aggressively trying to recruit teachers of color. The other problem is, obviously, teachers leave the profession. I think the statistics are like, what, 40 to 50% within the first five years? My husband tries to claim that he retired after three years, but anyways. But teachers of color leave the teaching profession at a faster rate than, than white teachers. And so then that's, that's obviously, that's, that's also a problem. I don't have that statistic, but I wish that there was more organizations tracking the data of how long people are staying in teaching in general. Because I serve on a, I serve on a different board and I've asked for data about like, who is tracking how long people are staying in teaching? When someone leaves their job? And there isn't actually anyone that's tracking how long people are individually staying in teaching right now.
Wow.
So, but that would be something, if we could learn more about that. But I do think that that's, that's playing into our numbers here.
Sure. And we, we are collectively using the description, teacher is, it self-serves for us as teachers in a public school system, but teachers make lots of lateral changes and such. You know, they might not leave teaching, but they might go to a different function or facet of teaching and if that better suits their needs.
So the committee spent some time looking at the best practices to recruit and primarily to retain. We did a read of three articles. And then one of our partners, Minnesota Humanity Center, as well as Metro State, gave us this information about the Comprehensive Center Network, which is Region 10, Wisconsin and Minnesota. So they've been gathering data, culling the research, to really figure out how we can make strides in, in Minnesota and Wisconsin. And so there are four areas that we found really captured the best practices for recruiting and retention.
One more thing.
Go ahead.
One more thing that I wanted to add that won't necessarily be reflected in the numbers is that even though we may not have a large staff of color population here at 191, I feel like they're a lot more involved in the community. I was like, while we were talking, I was thinking about how many, like how, like how many staff I interact with on the daily at Burnsville High School. And a majority of them were POCs. They're a lot more involved in the community, which can be reflected through the very large numbers in our affinity groups, which are significantly higher than they have ever been. And that's because they are being involved, they're being more involved in the community. I personally am more connected to the POC teachers at Burnsville High School than I am the white teachers, no offense. But it's something, just like, just a penny for your thoughts. I see and I, I communicate and I feel like that applies for a lot of the students as well, a lot more of the POC staff in our community.
So going back to the previous slide. So going back to the previous slide, Erin, but go ahead, Director Connor, I didn't see that question.
Well, I had just kind of been holding my comment too, but I'll just make it very brief. I do, uh, think the percentages are pretty close to correct, um, cause we, that's all we can go by is with everything is percentages. And, um, just from being in the school system, though I haven't been in, in a couple of years since COVID, um, I see that, and though we are strenuously trying to recruit, as she said, that was my main thought, too. A lot of, um, if you want to say teachers of color, they're not in this public school system, but being from a family of teachers, you know, sister-in-law, sister, I was, a lot of us are doing more community teaching, and that's where they go, that's where they feel that their efforts are, are more, I don't know, their talents are more usable, I guess, because there's so many other restrictions statewide type of things to be in a public school setting. Um, my teacher, I mean, my, one of my sisters, well, one of my sister-in-law, too, she'd been a teacher for years, but she got out of the public school system and went to like Bracket School, which is, isn't that a private school, I believe, or it's a charter school? My other, um, sister, she teaches, um, at a charter school, too. It's considered a public school, but it's charter school because it's through their church, and it's church members, but it's for the public, too, but it's a smaller setting. And they have most, and they have eighty percent black teachers there. So that's the thing, too, it depends on where you're living to, you know, a lot of, um, these inner-city, um, teachers, I'm sure the percentage of color, teachers of color are there as opposed to more suburbs, too. So that's what I wanted to add.
So this was the report, April twenty twenty-one, so first, a culturally responsive school leadership. Um, it's described by Mohamed Khalifa, a professor. It means that school and system leaders create a vision for culturally responsive, humanizing, and affirming schools for all students and staff, but especially for those who have been marginalized by educational systems. And you'll see some of the indicators of a culturally responsive school, uh, leadership components. The second one is culturally responsive work environment. So it's educators, um, all educators, I would say, not only educators of color, they prefer autonomy, um, and to get administrative support and to have that trusting relationship and genuine opportunities for staff to be engaged in decision-making. So it really is about that collegial trust, um, having there, we are community representation among staff, um, and the value, so your climate and having affinity groups and mentorship programs. So we'll go on to the next two, um, which actually show some evidence-based prac, uh, more about that. So the most, um, uh, influential and the best results for recruitment strategies are Grow Your Own and residency programs. And so this was straight from Minnesota and Wisconsin, and they're actually seeing it nationally, too. Uh, retention strategies, creating supports for staff of color, so differentiated, differentiated professional development, and the safe spaces to navigate the school as well as the district culture. And there again, the mentoring programs. And then we go on to the next two, um, next two slides, which show the current one ninety-one strategies. And I will tell you that I say it often, I'm a very proud superintendent. I was very proud to see that some of our current strategies are aligned to what are the best practices that the research is showing. So we are, we hire diverse leaders. We are working on making sure that we have affirming and welcoming, um, environments for our staff and students and using the CPSS professional development. Our leaders have been involved in Minnesota State Mankato Courageous Leadership Institute. We actually have our, uh, we continue that partnership. We are looking at our principal evaluation and development processes to make sure they are differentiated. The responsive work environment, once again, CPSS, our CPSS professional development, our Amplify affinity group that will now be restarted and refreshed, and we have a mentorship program. I remember when Wendy and I first started meeting, that was one of her concerns, that we really did not have a formal mentorship program. And you as the board, you have declared our values, which actually align to those first two best practices. And then the strategic direction, actively leading by developing and staying in a diverse and equitable school system. And it's interesting, HR staff will tell you when they ask people why they look to our district, they will frequently cite our equity work. Going on to the next one, uh, recruitment strategies. Um, the Grow Your Own, um, opportunity, so we did receive the Student Pathway One. So those of our graduates who declare to be education majors in post-secondary, we can support up to six thousand dollars in tuition. Um, we actually have an ABE program to support a pathway to EA positions. And in some of our contractual agreements that you, uh, approve with mutual agreement with the bargaining units, have tuition reimbursement. And one of our race advisory members said that is exactly how she used to further her education and to get a promotion within our system. And so you see the details embedded in those contracts. Going to the next slide, and I'll turn it over to Wendy to talk about the other two best practices in the research. Well, a little, excuse me, I'm sorry, we're going through the committee recommendations. Yes.
Uh, so at our, at our last meeting, uh, the committee put together these, these recommendations. They talked about making sure that there is a community that is welcoming for all staff at all of our sites. Um, and they talked about training for our, the leadership at all of our sites to make sure that they are facilitating a community that is welcoming for all, um, for teachers of color to also have our CPSS, uh, professional development, um, and also to address things such as microaggressions was an example. And then talking about having a leadership team that is specific to having, specific to CPSS. And then as Dr. Battle mentioned, um, like recommitting and restarting the district CPSS leadership team, I think during COVID, some of these things weren't meeting as often, such as like the, the affinity group Amplify. Um, and then also looking at like equity versus equality when making curriculum decisions. And looking at making sure that when we have staff of color that is, is speaking up and in sharing their voice and making sure that they're being heard on all of our committees. But the example that one of the members gave at the meeting was specifically about curriculum. And then on the, the next slide, these are culturally responsive schoolwork environment recommendations. So once again, like, um.
Yeah, it's the same one.
Okay.
They have that, too.
And so mu- much of the same thing, and like I said, um, having, one of the things that was, that's new on this slide is possibly having like a, a smaller affinity group at each site. Um, and just because of sometimes when the meetings are held, they're not able to make like the district Amplify meetings. Um, and also just really, I think, just to emphasize that community with, at our sites so that all of our staff feel connected, um, because that really goes back to the retention piece. If we hire staff of color and they don't feel connected to their building and they don't feel connected to the community there, then they, they do leave.
They go elsewhere, yep.
The other thing that's different within our CPSS work, um, they felt that too many times, uh, colleagues would say, well, I didn't intend, especially with the microaggressions, but we really need to focus on that impact. You got the next one, recruiting.
Okay. So for recruiting strategies, um, we talked about marketing that highlights the one ninety-one's student demographics, making sure that we're surrounded by districts that, that look different than us and making sure that people don't, that they really know what are, like, what a great diversity we have in our district. And I think if people really understand that, then we will get a more diverse applicant pool. Um, we also talked about having informational presentations for our educational assistants, helping them find out pathways to become teachers. Um, and also providing space on our, on our campus for teacher prep classes so that teachers can be attending the classes at night here rather than driving to another campus. And a big part about getting people to go into the field of teaching right now when it's such a competitive market, right, um, for workers, is promoting what teachers do with social justice, right? Um, and I think sometimes when people think about becoming a teacher, they might not necessarily think about that, but if we can promote that, I do think that we will get more, um, teachers of color and more people to go into teaching. Um, and then we also talked about providing summer internships for high school students and community members to learn about teaching and working in one ninety-one. Just because I think once, once we get them in and they start working in our schools, right, um, then they're gonna, they're going to want to stay. Um, and then we also talked about including students for interviews of staff, because we really want to make sure that we are hiring staff that are going to be the best for our students here. And if we include the students in the interviews, I think it's really important for the, the people that are coming here to see our students and interact with our students, and then we can see that during the interview process. Um, and then the next slide here, um, it has some recruiting strategies. Um, it talked about for candidates for, during their practicum and student teaching, um, to match, match our teachers of color that are student teachers and practicum teachers to be with staff of color to develop, um, relationship and then want to stay. Um, a lot of times, teachers where they do their student teaching, they do end up taking a job within the district. Um, and then also advertising the tuition reimbursement and paid student teaching experience.
And retention is the last.
Okay. Um, and then the next slide talks about our retention strategies, and once again, it's about really building that community in our sites.
The last one is the one that's different.
Okay, and then, yes, thank you, Dr. Battle, and then the last, the last piece here, educating staff about overreliance on staff of color for working with students of color. I think sometimes we really expect a lot of our staff of color, and they get pulled in many directions, and they get asked to do things that we wouldn't necessarily be asking for our, our white teachers. And so this was one of the ones that a couple of the committee members had some specific examples about, like bringing a student to Scott, hey, Scott, can you help me with Sam? And Scott does not have a relationship with Sam, but sometimes another teacher just might assume, well, Scott's a teacher of color, I bet he can help me with Sam, a student of color. So that was the example that we gave, and I really, this was one that I think that trying not to put any undue burden on our staff of color was really what we talked about there.
And then our last slide, I'll take next step. So your discussion, um, then Wendy will take it to the executive committee of Burnsville Education Association. Um, we are going to vet with other groups, um, but I think it's really important to say thank you to Wendy. I enjoyed working with her. Um, we both put on our teacher, classroom teacher hats again, and it was just a really great process. So I commend BEA as well as the board for this very important memorandum of understanding. And that's our report.
I, I would also just like to add, I'm super appreciative of the work that, uh, Dr. Battle, um, put into the committee, um, and also Jamie Kenny helped us with our, our documents, and so I really want to thank Jamie. We're very committed to this. Um, I recently got to see a, the twenty twenty-two National Teacher of the Year speak, um, from Ohio, and he is a, a teacher of color, and he talked about having teachers of color himself, and, um, and then there was also an individual who just spoke at the event I was just at, and he was one of the, one of the individuals that the movie, um, Freedom Writers? Freedom Writers was based on, and he talked about, he did not have a teacher of color till eighth grade. You know, and I, I sat there and I, I couldn't wrap my brain around that, like what that would be like for a student of color to not have a teacher of color till eighth grade. And I think it was also his first male teacher, right? And it's, so I'm really excited.
I didn't have one till tenth grade.
Sorry, what, Director Connor?
I just said, I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt, I thought you were taking a pause there.
Oh.
I was just saying, I didn't have one till tenth grade.
So, um, so we're very excited, and I feel like this is a good launching point for us, a good starting point.
So just the culturally responsive leaders that we have at all levels, the culturally responsive work environment, and then really paying attention to recruitment and retention are the four strategies, and we're going to work.
Discussion, comments, questions? Director?
Yeah, um, I would like to echo gratitude, um, because the time that you both and the committee have put into this, um, you know, having, having been part of that negotiation process to get the MOU included, um, this is just awesome. Um, I really appreciate the partnership, and I'm really excited about what's going to bloom as a result of the, the committee's work. Particularly, um, music to my ears is, um, the folk, you know, your last comment, Wendy, about, um, not placing undue reliance on, um, staff of color. Because I know for years in talking with staff, you know, not just teaching staff, all different staff, um, of color, that's kind of been a common theme, and so hearing that now, you know, really being part of the broad parlance, um, it just, I think it's really going to do, do a lot for our staff and for our students. Couple of questions. The guiding change input groups mention students and staff, but not families, and I'm wondering why that might be.
Uh, part of it might have been, we didn't want to get like too big of a group, but also Saro, I, I think I forgot to mention, Saro Abdallah, he served on the committee.
Gotcha.
So she is, uh, gosh, I don't know how I missed her. So she is also a parent.
Yep.
And right now, she's actually student teaching in the district. Um, and so we did have a parent.
I think that's a good idea, we could talk to some parent groups.
Just, I mean, I, I don't want to add to the committee's work.
Hopefully they have their, and then we are going to meet with some more students, too, especially because we want them to be on interview teams.
Yes.
Thank you.
Same comment for slide twelve. Um, when making curriculum decisions, um, in addition to hearing from staff of, staff and staff of color, um, we know we need to hear from our students and families, and, and whatever the mechanism is for that, I know we've got this ASIA committee, understand that, you know, that's still kind of getting ramped up for this year, but, you know, where else it might happen, that would be, you know, probably another helpful way to get input.
And that CEAC committee, they have fourteen members, so they're special ed advisory council, that might be a good group, too.
To get that. And then in the context of this discussion, I think the comment might have been added after my review of the slide deck. Is the Grow Your Own pro- program really focused solely on teacher and EA's Grow Your Own, or are we also looking at, you know, the Grow Your Own for bus drivers? I know, um, that's also something.
Oh, that continues. Um, yes, so we still have those programs, too. We did apply to two ABE grants, and we did not get them.
Gotcha.
I think that may be the ones we didn't get, but we're continuing to work.
Still doing it.
To offer the bus driver classes so they can become bus drivers with our contractor, Smitty and Sons.
Awesome. And just a comment, Seham, appreciate your voice, thank you so much. Our students are awesome, and we need to hear more from you, so thank you.
Thank you for being here. Director?
Yep, so, um, just a few questions. Um, so I am curious to know of like our BIPOC staff, um, like the tenure of some of those, like staff, like where, where those staff members are at as far as how long they've been here, um, and the ones that, you know, we did not retain, um, the numbers as far as the ones, how many left? left, and how many were ones that were let go.
Okay.
To me, that's important information, because if we're doing efforts to retain people, you know, that's not impactful if we're just letting people go. It doesn't really do anything if, you know, we're trying to retain people, yes, but if we are just laying them off, what was the retaining efforts for? So I guess my curiosity is, what are the numbers of, you know, people who actually left versus the ones that were actually, actually let go? I mean, I, I agree, these are wonderful efforts that have gone into this. I'm very thankful that we came up with this MOU. I was there, too, on the negotiations committee. So I, I think this was a, a great development, and very happy that we have this committee and the work that we have in the, you know, the students and everyone coming together. I think it's, it's great, so, but I want to make sure, you know, it's not for not, you know? So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director?
You're welcome.
First, I'll echo what others have said, and thank you to Dr. Battle and to Wendy and the entire group for all the work, time and effort and work that has gone into something that is a very important thing that we should be talking about, and we should, we have to do a better job for our students and for our district. So thank you to both of you and everybody else for all the work that's gone into this. I guess my question is, and it's alluded to in the guiding change document, but five years from now, 10 years from now, what is success going to look like? If we, how, how are we going to know that we've made progress? Because even just looking at the numbers that were presented early on in the presentation, we've gone from 39 teachers of color to 26 in the last five years. And the percentage has also decreased. Yes, we've, our overall teacher number is down pretty significantly over the last five years for all the reasons that we have talked about many times. But moving forward, you know, what does it mean five years from now? I mean, I think it, we, it has to be more than, we go from 26 teachers of color to 27 teachers of color. So, you know, maybe that's something for, as a next step, is just to think about how, how are we defining success over, over a longer period of time? And how will we know when we've actually moved that needle?
Well, not including me, it ranges from 0% to 35% with the different employee groups.
Right.
And so I think it's also setting some success metrics, it's also tied to Director Webb's question, how many are leaving, how many are retaining? So as you know, I think our district, you would know better, there are many more like me that are elders 25 years or more. And so at some point, we're going to retire.
Mm-hmm.
And so at that point, I think that's a good marker. How many do we hire? So the new hires, so you kind of have to look at both.
Mm-hmm.
Who you have in the system, because it's a pretty good life, at least for a teacher.
Sure.
With your benefits, compared, and we love kids, so we want to be around kids. And, you know, I think my retired teachers always say, the hardest week was the first week of school after I retired, to not be with those kids and excited. So I'm not really sure what it looks like in 10 years. Maybe Wendy has some thoughts about that.
I mean, some of it, for me, it would be about doing staff surveys, about asking people how they feel about working in 191, right? And having, having good results on those numbers, right? Like people saying that they enjoy working here, especially like our staff of color. And I think unfortunately, also the pool is very small, right? And so we have to be super strategic about getting out in front and like having people really understand what the district is like, because I think sometimes people just assume, oh, it's south of the river, it's, it must just be like whatever district that's next to us. But I, and to Anna's question, we, we do have a fair amount of resignations in the district. Since I've been president, there's been about, this is my eighth year, and we've had about 270 teacher resignations. So not terminations, not retirements, just resignations. I'm kind of a, I've gotten to be a little bit of a spreadsheet geek with my BEA membership, and we're about 97% members. So when I add it up, like how many have just resigned, and there's always going to be resignations, like a spouse has to move to another state, or maybe you need a lifestyle change or something like that. But a, a lot of the teachers, I feel like I know my members very well, they are staying and teaching. And so really looking at that. And I also think the, the mentoring piece is very important, having teachers of color mentoring our newer teachers of color, I think is very important, because that's why we, because when you don't have systems like that, that's why teachers of color are leaving at a faster rate.
Well, and I think, too, dovetailing on that, Wendy, those HR exit interviews that you mentioned, getting the data from those, right? If we can understand for each of our teachers and staff that leave us, not because they've been cut, but for some other reason, what are the themes there? That'll help us crack that nut.
And so Aaron Tinklinberg did present to the committee. So what's interesting, he did ask on the staff survey, for staff members to identify, self-identify if they were staff of color, and it was much less than our percentages. And so he's asking, he asked the committee, what are some questions you would like us to ask our staff of color? And we would actually do a targeted survey. And so I think some of those same questions could be used in the exit survey for employees as they're leaving, too.
Director?
Well, I can tell you, as a, a teacher of color, since I didn't have an actual classroom, but I was in the classroom, and I subbed in classrooms, and I was even a, the school nurse for about three months.
That's, that's school personnel.
I, the, what kept me, and this was in Emver Grove for nine years, what kept me in wanting to be with students for nine years in Emver Grove, even though it was a very small percentage of black people there, or even students of color there, though. I, I did feel welcomed, I felt valued. Sure, most of the students I worked with were the handful of students of color, and, but that was okay, because they knew I was relatable. I didn't take offense to that. But, you know, I'm not saying everybody does or doesn't, that was just me. And I felt valued, I had great success with the students, and they saw that, and they noticed it, and it, it worked. And that's what made me want to stay. And, and I stayed with it for all those years until I moved here, and then I got right back in the school system here, but, and then COVID happened, and I just happened to get another job during COVID, and then, you know, the money's too good to let go, so. But I, I do miss the kids. I even wanted to go back, and, but I don't know if that's possible now, because I'm, because I'm playing tug of war. But, yeah, I, I do, I really, you do, you know, you have a heart for kids and for teaching and learning the whole kid, at least I do, and I'm sure many teachers do, I know many teachers do. And it's hard to let that go. So when I retire, I still want to go back and teach.
Other comments, questions? No? No, I really, really appreciate this. Thank you for, and the committee and Seeham for just all of the work to put this together. It's something that I'm working in professionally right now, too, and so it's just, just being able to see what was presented, knowing the work that I do, it is, what you're saying aligns. And so it, it's very exciting to see that here, especially regarding focusing on impact and not intent, and focusing on not burdening our, having us, the, our staff of color be representative of their whole race. And, and so I think that's very important, that that's being vocalized and acknowledged. And so very excited about seeing, you know, once we, kind of like, how do we know if we're getting to where we want to go, and, you know, and kind of maybe addressing Director Webb's questions regarding some of the retention, or, or finding out how many of our staff of color have been here 30 years? Would be really great to see some of that. I'm a data junkie, so, I mean, I, I enjoy the data, so.
So thank you for that. I think another success metric is, if you look at this issue in, as a numbers game, when you have 82% of your teacher candidates in post-secondary are white, you have to have culturally responsive white teachers.
Yes.
So that metric from the students, that they value me, they see me, they support me, they don't discriminate, they honor me, I think that's all, also a metric, too. Because I don't think in 20 years, we're going to have 67% teachers of color. Let's just take teachers in our district. Unless something dram- dramatically changes with our, our post-secondary. And one of the strategies we might explore is actually having partnerships with a higher ed, education institution and a tribal college or historically black college and university that attract them here to Minnesota, because I have to tell you, if love, love brought me to Minnesota, I don't think I would be here.
Yep.
But really targeting strategies, how we can get more teachers of color to Minnesota.
That's exactly where we're bringing.
And we're all, we, all the districts have the same.
Yeah.
Diversity goals, so we're all going after.
Yep.
So some out of the box things, too, we hope will come out of this, too, in some additional new ways.
Yeah, I was wondering how we were attracting maybe teachers or people seeking teaching from other states.
Grow Your Own, get some more in Minnesota.
But if not, where else?
Thank you.
Great. Any other thoughts, comments? Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This concludes our workshop.